Woumiya ma mi wa yo wangwa E misana ma chawasi ya o A jia yé swa mama brava sisa Ena tumo, na tumo akwa Woumiya ma mi wa yo wangwa E misana ma chawasi ya o Mesia yé swa mama brava sisa Ena tumo, na tumo Ee na tum, na tum, na tum
Na dum
Ee na tum
Na
Aduma Ee na tum, na tumo Ena tum Aduma akwa
Dum na dum, na dum
Ena tum
Enso tum é na tumwa
Ee na tum, na tumo Ena tum Aduma akwa Evadi wamremobiya Ina mi wamremobiya
Akaka krabi
Evadi wamremobiya
Akaka krabi Né u suu si bisita
Ina mi wamremobiya Woumiya ma mi wa yo wangwa E misana ma chawasi ya o A jia yé swa mama brava sisa Ena tumo, na tumo akwa Woumiya ma mi wa yo wangwa E misana ma chawasi ya o Mesia yé swa mama brava sisa Ena tumo, na tumo Ee na tum, na tum, na tum
Na dum
Ee na tum
Na
Aduma Ee na tum, na tumo Ena tum Aduma akwa
Dum na dum, na dum
Ena tum
Enso tum é na tumwa
Ee na tum, na tumo Ena tum Aduma akwa Evadi wamremobiya
En ruu suu di ga isu
Ina mi wamremobiya
Akaka krabi
Evadi wamremobiya
Akaka krabi Né u suu si bisita
Ina mi wamremobiya
Yon na misuwa mizuniza Obakufue mi niyobiya Echi na ma mi ye yaka chi Edi mani suho ni baso Tanyo me kini mi ye yoba brahe Kasimoni ba mwa ni ba A jia yé mi guané warum Mesia evadi ye suwa masisa Masisa brahe Asisa Fensha mesha yé mi no Mesia evadi ye suwa Tu be woumiya ma mi wa yo wangwa Yo su su ya onama Ube woumiya ma mi wa yo wangwa Nafisela me wosu ni kasi ya o Ube woumiya ma mi wa yo wangwa Ma yo wangwa o Mesia mesha mesha yé mi no Mesia evadi ye suwa masisa Masisa brahe Masisa Fensha mesha yé mi no Mesia evadi ye suwa masisa
Ee na tum, na tum, na tum
Adum
Ee na tum Aduma ee na tum, na tum, na tum Ee na tum Aduma akwa Dum na dum, na dum Ee na tum Aduma ee na tum, na tum, na tum Ee na tum Aduma akwa Evadi wamremobiya Evadi wamremobiya Evadi wamremobiya Evadi wamremobiya
Iyo iyo di mani monyam Monyam Atomo ye mi kamkapiya Kamkapiya Bakufue kamikrano ni ba Tonien ti ni pa no mia o Nyenda na mesha na medya Banofue yé mia surimiya Eyenda na meninbe wasi ya o Amama foku ambe mi ya koyo
Ne mu se mi niyobiya e chasiye
Mesio kro kro na nenyé mi no Mesia evadi ye suwa masisa Asisa brahe Asisa Fensha mesha yé mi no Mesia evadi ye suwa masisa
Ee na tum, na tum, na tum
Na dum
Ee na tum
Na
Aduma Ee na tum, na tumo Ena tum Aduma akwa
Dum na dum, na dum
Ena tum
Enso tum é na tumwa
Ee na tum, na tumo Ena tum Aduma akwa Evadi wamremobiya Ina mi wamremobiya
Akaka krabi
Evadi wamremobiya
Akaka krabi Né u suu si bisita
Ina mi wamremobiya Evadi wamremobiya Evadi wamremobiya Evadi wamremobiya Evadi wamremobiya
A jia yé mi guané warum Mesia evadi ye suwa masisa Masisa brahe Asisa Fensha mesha yé mi no Mesia evadi ye suwa Tu be woumiya ma mi wa yo wangwa Yo su su ya onama Ube woumiya ma mi wa yo wangwa Nafisela me wosu ni kasi ya o Ube woumiya ma mi wa yo wangwa Ma yo wangwa o Mesia mesha mesha yé mi no Mesia evadi ye suwa masisa Masisa brahe Masisa Fensha mesha yé mi no Mesia evadi ye suwa masisa
Ee na tum, na tum, na tum
Adum
Ee na tum Aduma ee na tum, na tum, na tum Ee na tum Aduma akwa Dum na dum, na dum Ee na tum Aduma ee na tum, na tum, na tum Ee na tum Aduma akwa Evadi wamremobiya Evadi wamremobiya Evadi wamremobiya Evadi wamremobiya
Iyo iyo di mani monyam Monyam Atomo ye mi kamkapiya Kamkapiya Bakufue kamikrano ni ba Tonien ti ni pa no mia o Nyenda na mesha na medya Banofue yé mia surimiya Eyenda na meninbe wasi ya o Amama foku ambe mi ya koyo
Ne mu se mi niyobiya e chasiye
Mesio kro kro na nenyé mi no Mesia evadi ye suwa masisa Asisa brahe Asisa Fensha mesha yé mi no Mesia evadi ye suwa masisa
Ee na tum, na tum, na tum
Na dum
Ee na tum
Na
Aduma Ee na tum, na tumo Ena tum Aduma akwa
Dum na dum, na dum
Ena tum
Enso tum é na tumwa
Ee na tum, na tumo Ena tum Aduma akwa Evadi wamremobiya Ina mi wamremobiya
Akaka krabi
Evadi wamremobiya
Akaka krabi Né u suu si bisita
Ina mi wamremobiya Evadi wamremobiya Evadi wamremobiya Evadi wamremobiya
You wish you say Ghana Abekonene So if we can have the same system here In Ghana Anga yempi yé niha If we can have the same data system E wu wouwa Anga Ghana yé niha And it's about time we need someone Who started from the roots A true hustler Who has lived here, worked here And knows the truth behind closed doors And we're supposed to be strong behind him He has been here He has worked here so many years He started from Germany And he has seen things he don't suppose to see And he decided to run Ladies and gentlemen Before I introduce Our chairpersons and executive And honorable Ken O'Nijapong Let me introduce to you to my co- emcee Most of you may know her Our social media personality Nahah Dango and DA Thank you And now ladies and gentlemen please Let's welcome Honorable Ken O'Nijapong Bishop Ak Bishop Kofi Adonti Bwatin And the co-place Let's welcome them What DJ Let's make it happen DJ Let's do this We can do it Vibration time DJ come on let's do it
Jesus my everything
Yes
Everything that you love
Let's find some more show Young boys some more Young 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 Let's make our noise Let's welcome them Good evening to you And once again you're all welcome To the town hall of Menton But before we proceed with all the programs We have tonight ladies and gentlemen Munemi ya lada ya Ghana for We can never start anything without prayers And God being so good tonight We have one of the great pastors in our mix That will lead us into prayers Ladies and gentlemen with round of applause please Let's welcome Reverend Mike Mensah To lead us into prayers Thank you Come on DJ work with me Work with me Let's welcome Reverend Amen Patro mouni yé swa minyana So please humbly be on your feet We give honor to whom honor is due The king of kings, the lord of laws They are young that are young, the ancient of days He deserves all the praise Ya vampire Ya vampire yes to the animal Etu ju me biye esha wonsa Wona yé diya diya esha wonsa Né yé anni enfru wonsa mwa En tofo Ya di shawonsa Omane ba ebi ye pa Ya di shawonsa Omani ponsu suye Ni pa etri mukor Ah eh ya boni Omane enbe mok Etu sa ju me biye Ya di shawonsa ene anaji Ya vampire say Ube di hini ewo ju me biye so Ya vampire say Uto mi be ya juma ene anaji To mi diye eni peniniye A jende biara evadi Enfru wonsa Na ede wosaye Eni guasie A shiasie E kobe siye evadi Anaji ya di mojani echem Ya vampire ede ya honorable Eni peni for Evadi esha wonsa Ya vampire say wisdom will be given unto them Ya vampire say divine wisdom Will be released upon them So the vision they have Their heart desire Their dreams Will come to realization And anaji niye yé beju wahah Niye yé banu wahah Niye yé be ya wahedi ano We commit it all unto you most high God And we pray that Lord your peace That surpasses all understanding Will take over tonight And Lord God At the end of it all We will come before your throne of grace And give you all the thanks And all the praise We thank you for making this gathering a successful one In the mighty name of Jesus We humbly pray Can all the people shout a big amen To the glory of God Oh God shout amen God bless him
Eda wase Reverend Mike Mensah Yan kuku inshaa ney pa ibwa Dumwe yé de Ubiya wa yé say papa 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 inedi DJ Ya wa America yé diye Né se say oma yé America National anthem Nache su mu se Eh ya wa America Enti DJ Wa yé wey diye Bamba diye nafa Aha nom yé national anthem No fe tum maye Na uviya na mi akadiye wokomo
Thank you They are working on the song Ladies and gentlemen May they can I can ask me Uh one more one more question Some honorable There'll be time for questions Enti memorize your questions So when you come here you don't have to be all confused And perplexed now they are there Unimbi biye wu timunda that you have it on your phone You can read it You ask honorable May they can I can ask me We need somebody who has struggled from the roots Ubiya wa breath heavy Uh from the roots Ah unim Ghana for eh ha wu ma kuma We are tired of these so-called highly dedicated people And then when they come they disappoint us The country needs somebody like him And we are not looking back We are moving forward Ina America Nyentse yé li no le wu wu ba biye ney Kete ney Si alokwa beni wu ma ngana ya ale Eba imeno Ni ka wote si tu wu ba ato mosu Ni wu ba ato wu imenu Nwo ato mukutomo mwa bu Ni ado tsi ya wu Beni bi ba atu kili ne kenon Ni abaya Amale echon wu Abaya Be shé Nwo acha ke wodon Ni wu ba ato woku Tomonago ken Eh yé won Salaamun alaikum Dawa yé dama somayi Sanonku da suwa Dama mosnemayi Kuduwa somoku Abuka de kei suwa tkin somoku Mun samoya NBC Mun samoya MPP Anzo Amu na magena che auche Aga samu fos na aga kale Che atantantata Aba hunna che auka Aba moka dan achi che auche Loke chi ya kai kamo Mu nu kamo Wusake antalimu Wu tekama no Look at chi ya ke de damu sa Honorable Ken O'Nijapong Who bachi kani
Allah
Yes sir
Allah
Ladies and gentlemen And now who as it Can we all please stand on our feet Be on your feet And for the national anthem Of United States of America
Oh say can you see By the dawn's early light What's the problem we have At twilight's blasting Whose thoughts and bright stars Through the perilous fight Were the members we watched First of all that we dreamed And the rockets' red wings The stars still in the air They move through the night And I think I'm still there Oh the saviors as hearts hang And nothing will change All the life Does not cease And oh Oh
Thank you ladies and gentlemen And now the national anthem of Ghana Thank you Thank you Muntenasi Eda wase Eda wase Eda munyana wase Ladies and gentlemen Let me call one of the brains behind this program tonight And I believe she's here I strongly don't know her in person But therefore her kindness And endurance The fascinating words she share On the private platform we have on Ken O'Nijapong Is very encouraging Ladies and gentlemen Please let's welcome Cecilia Bwatin For her remarks It's Madame Cecilia here Like I said I don't know her in person Okay we skip Madame Cecilia for now And also Thank you Thank you Thank you Well everybody is supposed to be here on time And we skip you when you are not here Cause Honorable don't have much time He has a lot to do Especially tomorrow morning Ladies and gentlemen One of the sponsors for this program tonight Is no one else but Dr. Ibenezer Banahini Of Banahini Hospital May patro yé monse mano amé Thank you Thank you Thank you And now ladies and gentlemen Let's welcome one of the great lawyers In our mix in the Ghanaian community here She has funded a group That will help Ghanaians Especially Ghanaians with immigration issues Those who have been bounced Separated For marriages And maybe other issues from home If yé awa fali ama oma You want to know the differences She's here tonight She's one of the wonderful Ghanaian lawyers we have And she's strongly behind Honorable Ken O'Nijapong Ladies and gentlemen please Let's welcome the founder of Armon Williams A global boutique law firm focusing on US and Ghanaians Per se Immigration issues Ladies and gentlemen let's welcome Joyce Williams If she's here Joyce Williams One more say mano amé please This woman is doing a wonderful job Under the table And a lot of people don't even know She has helped more than 200 Ghanaians Privately God bless you Joyce You are doing a wonderful job Thank you
One of them for introducing me as A vibration lawyer I will not talk to you about vibrations tonight To introduce our guests of honor tonight I'm honored To introduce a man whose name is Synodimus With seven leadership He belongs to an illustrious clan of men of God Philanthropists educators and changemakers He applies the principles of God To empower people Through many social initiatives Among his significant initiative Is the faithful servant award initiative Which honors first responders Police officers in the states of Virginia For their dedication to serve and protect the public A pillar of the Ghana diaspora community He was recently recognized And awarded the prestigious President's Volunteer Service Award By President Joe Biden In recognition of his outstanding contributions In the community service to the United States As a counselor His sense of charity compassion and awareness Has positioned him as a leading figure In the call for increased and meaningful diaspora involvement In the development of Ghana and the rest of the continent State and local leaders have taken notice of his work And affectionately calls him America's mayor Now ladies and gentlemen Join me with a tender applause To welcome The head pastor of Divine Way International Ministry The host who brought us here tonight The Ak Bishop-elect Dr. Kofi Adonti Bwatin
Come on Come on We can do better than this Come on round of applause Oh u suyé yé na wu He is the brain behind this And we are using his auditorium elsewhere We can do better than this Thank you Badratinas Me inko bebe unu zekana for me ma be bresha bebe saada Iu biya yé yé ghe po Ome ya monse ma ya oma Ghana atse Ghana for me ma be pese I just say be a party in Pibe We in ya party But this shows how much we love Ghana Especially those of us in America If one day Ghana will resemble a little bit of the style of America I believe that most of us will not even be here We would like to go and invest deep in Ghana You are very welcome for being here tonight Looking at how beautiful wonderful Everybody that is gathered here is And the smile on your faces waiting to see This great man that we imported Galan seed All the way to Virginia Give a clap or fragrance to your side Because we all love Ghana that is why we're here And this platform that we have gathered here And it's not a platform that is meant for myself Even for this great man that I love so dearly But for the whole of Ghana And it is my prayer that one day as we have gathered here This will be the gateway For us to make Ghana better than we have ever imagined Listen to something before I introduce this man Recently I said Morocco right Recently Morocco was The State Department categorized Morocco as a State sponsor of terrorism So no American wants to go there You know but they they realized they are very close to Europe So they decided that these sort of us throwing bombs at Americans Why don't you go into agriculture So Morocco started going to agriculture Agriculture so when they make tomatoes they take it to Italy, Germany Now Morocco has become very rich And they invested in tourism Morocco every American who wants to enjoy any part of Africa They don't go to Ghana they go to Morocco Not just that You see you know what money can do If you have money you can invest in so many things Morocco started a soccer academy in their country Example build schools Train soccer See now this Moroccans Look at where they are in the World Cup And look at where Ghana is One day I pray Honorable Ghana will win a World Cup Oh wa yé te dasa adema bekanase Adema wachada Wait a second Ya te te biye na ya lias Ladies and gentlemen By the grace of God I have this wonderful sweet man He is a man but he's also a mother He loves people I watch him from YouTube I watch him from YouTube as an MPP candidate that so many people gone. And this man was investing in a child of an NBC migrant because the child is smart. But this man doesn't care whether you are black, a below, blue, white, whatever it is. He invests in humanity and he loves humans. Oh my, oh my, Dr. Ofori, oh sorry my brother. Oh monster my doctor, Emma Whitey, Ghana released a in the Bible and doctor Ofori, and I'm in for my answer.
Bishop, Medase, Papa Way, he's one of the finest Ghanaian doctors in New York, New Jersey. Now, if I tell you what he has done for humans, a big threat in the back and. Dr. Ofori will ask you, just call whenever you have the money, just come, we are Ghanaian. My vision is to see Ghanians are producing and moving in abroad. Enough of a busian for every hour, we discuss rent, electricity, phone bills, now they are there. But this man with a heavy heart, I love him so much. Ladies and gentlemen, please, a round of applause for Dr. Ofori. A successful businessman, successful politician, politician. Why a successful businessman, very well successful politician? So he had a CEO, I'll be running you through now. I'll be checking, I'm a young boy. All you know, so no one do in China, in humanity, I'm a young boy. Now say, and then I see the issue, and I want to ask you now, what do you mean now? Now, let's have a beer, eh, man, I'm a war. Do you have a problem? What do you think? Now, I mean, I can't agree to ask you, say, maybe I'm not sure you mind when you grow. Now, in Germany, oh, in Germany, of free, America, did you move him up there? I bet you so successful as a politician, as a businessman. So you will be, I will show you my move, I will be the next chapter now. Me just say, eh, yeah, yeah, Papa, you're honorable, you be here. Now, we need to give back, I may do for the enemy, I may do back to us. It's a new case of the brain. Yeah, I may do back to us, I may say, my, sorry, now, you're very dear, any support, you share it, Papa, the honorable Akon Preko, Kennedy Kennedy in Japan, I like to call him the fantastic Akon Preko.
Hello. Good evening. I think it would be fair, I speak English because we have other people in our midst that do not understand the truth. So I ask permission to speak English, to cut across. First of all, I want to take this opportunity to thank Bishop Abramden and the organizers for the wonderful work done. Let's clap for him. I also want to thank the audience. I know the weather is cold, you have a lot to do, prepare for tomorrow church or whatever I want to do against Monday, but you spend time to be here just to listen to me, that is extremely nice of you. Let's clap for ourselves. I believe tonight, everybody is anxious to hear or see me speak. This is not going to be a boom speech, that I assure you. In Ghana, what is it now is, you have to be presidential. And I ask a question, what do you mean by presidential? Presidential to them is that it is not anything that you have to respond. Sometimes you have to close your eyes and a guy who was advising, he said, sometimes, it means not all the time. Sometimes you have to respond because if you don't do that, others will think they are doing the right thing, meanwhile, they are wrong. So permit me, what you've read about me, what do you know now? I'm the same, I can't change 100%. That'd be wrong for Ghana. If I change 100%, it'd be wrong and I'll be fake. I don't want to fake, I want to be myself. Tonight, I want to announce to you that come April 2023, when MPP opens nomination, I'm going to pick the forms. And contest as a presidential candidate for MPP. And this is my second home and therefore I have to be here under the invitation of Bishop Abramden to break the news officially. Maybe you've heard it, you heard it on radio, internet and all those things. Today I'm here personally to announce to you that in April, I'm going to contest, I'll pick the forms. Some people who know me very well ask why now? And my simple answer to them is, there are times and seasons and every time and every situation calls for a leader. This is the time that I believe, and I know most of you believe that, it is a time that we need bold person, honest man, a businessman, and not a practical, pragmatic leader to move the country. In Ghana, our educational standard is very high. We produce professors, doctors, and they are terrorists. In America here, they educate the kids, but they teach them how to reason. That is why even high school, when you are graduating from high school, I remember my kids living in a affluent area, one of them was assigned to a supermarket to go and work. And the mother wanted to go and drop her, said, no, let her take a car. Let me get a feel of how are this live? Because you're going to school with a car, whereas when we were going to school, we're walking. So let's teach them, teach them. And through this, one of them also went out and I see home. One day she came back from crying that she doesn't want to change the old ladies, whatever. Say, you better go back, one day you grow too, be like the old ladies, you gotta do it. But in Ghana, when you see a graduate from Investigative Ghana Business School and when they want to train him, say national service, and they put him or her as a receptionist, what is he going to like? A graduate student, an engineer, you transfer him to be a receptionist? We are not practical. This is the time that we got to move Ghana. We got to move it. I'm not saying that we don't need education, education is very, very important, but we need hands-on, especially the technical students. They have to take over the country. Too much of English, always speaking English, they speak a lot of English and their pockets are empty. They can't work. Because I employ all kinds of professionals, I know that the technicians working on my new sites make more money than the graduates working at television, radio and my offices. Yeah, because I give you example where my steel plant, a contractor charged 11.8 million Ghana cedis and his labor is 2.4 million Ghana cedis, whereas the highest paid worker at Oman FM or Ken City is 7,000 cedis, 7,000 times 12 is 84. So if you take even 10% of the 2.4 million, the contractor who is a technician has made 240, but I know he makes more than 15%. But when the graduates come out of cabbage and you assign them to these kind of specialization, they don't want to do it. Meanwhile, I remember a story that a roommate from Germany, I helped come to America, he's a notary. Then we went to a lawyer friend's office. And that time, there were four Ashanti guys who were security, working as security officers. Then we listed you, you see all these Ashanti guys here. When you are in Ghana, you call we the notariest watchman, what are you doing here? We're security, we're also watchmen. In short, we come all the way to America as graduates and start as watchmen. We qualify as security, you know? So all I'm saying is that we can move our country if indeed we appreciate it. But before we do that, ladies and gentlemen, there is no magic anywhere that can change, can assert, all of us collectively, we change our mindset. We need to change our mindset. What do I mean by that? See these young kids among us here. When they were singing the national anthem, I saw my nurses singing. And when it came to Ghana, our national anthem, they were quiet. It means they are not proud to be Ghanians. Let me put Bishop on the spot. I was here four days ago, he took me to his office and I saw American flag and I was so disappointed, so I asked Bishop, what happened? Are you a Ghanaian or you American? You have American flag here, you don't have Ghana flag here. Tonight I saw Ghana flag. You know, we have to be proud of our country. And the only way we can do that is when we are honest to ourselves, we conscientize every individual. Now look, we have nowhere to go, home sweet home. If home sweet home, then we have to change our mindset. When I was birthday, I heard the MC saying that, oh, he started from Germany, I started from Ghana. I was going to Ghana to Lagos to buy peatrol pads, brought it to Ghana to sell. And one day I was robbed in Nigeria. Before I went to Germany, I was robbed. And the last word I remember that time was that. When they took the money from me, they gave the spare parts back, but I didn't have any Naira or me. So I asked the criminals, oh God, make you give me five Naira for damn for damn for. Then he said, oh, Morgana, go on, don't punish me, glory to God. Then they pushed me away. You know, I went to Germany, wash plates, supermarket promatch, we will do two hours. I happen to be here, I started a Zaro bakery, gas station, gaseteria, Sidco gas station, then a taxi driver. So I went to university at the age of 33, Fordham University. Yeah, and here we are today. So when you see me, I stand for who? Now, anybody who wants to succeed in life, irrespective of where you come from, once you're determined to make it, yes, you can make it. If you have a dream. Don't be myopic, think big and dream big, do things big. Ghanians always misconstrue confidence to be arrogant. Let them call you arrogant. If your pocket is deep, you can talk the way you want to talk. That is what I want Ghanaian youth to believe in. We have myopic thinkers in Ghana. When you want to do this, they will tell you, oh, it's too big, we can't do it, please give me a break. We've lived in America for so long, we've seen how things work, why can't we do it to you? We can, we can do it. In a classroom at the age of 33, I happen to be an American who is who, two consecutive terrorists. I beat the white people. But after college, a white is seen superior. Why? I personally believe the difference between a white man and a black man is that when you are working at the same place and you work hard, a white man will promote you for working hard. In Ghana, when you work hard, they discourage you, they call you all sorts of names, my, are you stupid? Why are you working so hard for Kenyatta and his family? That makes a big difference. I know most of you here want to go home, but this pulling down system in Ghana, they don't want you guys to come there and change anything. They don't want to change anything. So when you come back and you want to make a difference by changing the status quo, they begin to have problems with you. And it cuts across everywhere, there is a black man. And it cuts across everywhere there is a black man. Everywhere. This is why you always see white people as superior. But in our various places, one on one, when we are giving equal opportunities, you see that black men, we are capable. We are capable. That is what I want to instill in Ghanian youth. That they should take their destiny into their own hands. And Ghana, almost seventy percent have turned to beggars. And now witness to it, every morning, the first phone call you get comes from your sister, your brother, asking for money for his child. This is the time that if I'm given opportunity, I'll change the fortunes of the country. I have three pillars, but the three pillars are P, patriotic, H, honesty, and D, discipline. Patriotism, we should love our country. And associated to the Ten Commandments, where it says, love thy neighbor as yourself. If you love your country, you will not steal your country. If you love your country and you are asked to do eight hours, you will not do four hours. If you are honest to your country, you will not steal. If you are honest to your country, you will not inflate figures. If you are honest, you will not place your selfish interests above the national interest. And if you are disciplined, when they say you have to get to work at eight, you are there at eight, not eleven, you'll be fired. If you get there at eleven, you are fired, you gotta go home. I am not afraid of anybody because of votes. It's my principle and that is what I believe in. That is why America is there. If you have to report at eight, eight. If you are fired, no Bishop Adontin coming to plead for you. No lawyer coming to plead for you. No MP coming to plead for you, you are fired. Yes. Discipline, you see, one day, I lost my temper and I nearly slapped a girl. But my wife, she said, hey, how do you stoop so low? She said, sometimes you have to get down to their level for them to learn. You know, I was driving to my house and I go to thirty-seven military hospital. A lady was selling water. She gave one to somebody in the trottoir. The guy in the traffic, she drank the water and gave the plastic to the girl. And the girl dropped it on the floor. I said, pick it. And she started insulting me. Yeah. And when you look at the car that I was using and the girl standing there insulting me because she dropped it, that's not discipline. I opened the door and my wife pulled me back. I wanted to give her a slap for her to learn, you can't just drop it. These same people will tell you Ghana is this, Ghana is that. Meanwhile, you are part of it, you are part of the problem. I have a fourth pillar and the fourth pillar is meritocracy. If you vote for me under my government, you can be my wife, you can be my son. If you don't marry the position, I will not give it to you. I will give it to you. That is the only way we can change our country. It's important, we need bold, men to take bold decisions. I don't want to be president for eight years, I only want to be president for four years. And there is difference between a leader and a politician. There's difference between a leader and a politician. A leader is the one who thinks of the development of his country and take bold decision irrespective of the reputation. And a politician is the one who thinks of tomorrow's election and therefore is not bold to take the decision. I don't think of tomorrow's election, I think of today, how I can make a difference in society. Maybe Ghana the four years and say, look, let's give them another mandate. That is more important. But for me to be afraid to speak the truth, for me to be afraid to take Ghana's money and bring it to America, I will do it. I will do it. I will invest in my own country and create employment for the youth that are not working. I'm a businessman and I know all the tricks. I'll block all the loopholes. From Ghana Fest. I believe in Ghana. You know, I have set example at Ghana Gas. And I realized Ghanaians themselves won't change. Because one day, I had a problem in term one of my coastal, so I had to dash down there around six. And that day, I had a board meeting. So I think I got back earlier and the traffic was so heavy for me to go to Moving Peak and come back to the airport. So I went straight to Ghana Gas. When I got there, the workers, they are about three fifty. At eight thirty-seven AM, only hundred and ten had reported. So I took the list, made a copy and put it in my pocket and started going around the offices. Yes, why this city is empty? Oh, it's been assigned to a trouble. Okay, what about this city? I don't know. Okay, then I mark it. I went and surprisingly, six general managers were late. Including the general manager of human resources. And listen to a funny story. A lady came to me, I went to the office, the senior manager. She was not at post. When she got there, they told her, hey, board chairman was here. And frantically looking for me. When she got there, she said, no, our husband. I said, our husband, then I, I know she's from Holika. So I said, yes, madam. So I hear you came to look for me. I said, who are you? I asked her name and she said, oh, I'm so soon and so. Then I asked her, why are you late? She says to me, there's an old lady, a ninety-year-old lady who died and they were happening memorial services at Christ the King. And I had to ask her, so we are using Ghana Gas hours to go to memorial service? And you call me our husband? I'm afraid, that will not work. You are lucky, a board chairman cannot be sent to the senior managers level to file. If they are filed, you write a line. But I'm going to report you to the chief executive. You cannot, and hear me clearly, whether you are working for your husband, you cannot use Ghana Gas hours to go to your home run. I'm sorry, it don't work. The human resources lady came, also looking for you. She said, this was your program. I said, no, I went out there, I checked the time and she came to me around ten forty. She said, when are you supposed to report at what? I said, eight o'clock. And here ten forty, why ten forty? Oh, I went out there to do something. Is it in the interest of Ghana Gas or personally? It's in person. So you are using Ghana Gas hours for your personality. I'm afraid, madam, it's not gonna work. This is your last time and I'm going to report you. I went to one department, I saw a gentleman, the auntie. And I asked him, what do you, do you say auntie? Then I pulled the paper out of my pocket and showed him. You think the auntie go, is there an age? People come, you write your name and go back. Low fingerprint, you can't punch, I'm afraid. So we have started, then he said, couple of months, it's okay. Now, how many days will it take you to complete what you are doing? He said, one month. I said, no. Three weeks. I said, no. Two weeks, it's okay. It's eight thirty-seven, thirty-day morning. In two weeks, thirty-eight thirty-seven, I'll be here to check if you've done the job or not. So the fourteen days, the guy did it in eleven days. I wondered and told the chief executive, he was a manager. I said, promote him. The chief executive was giving me a Spanish, I said, listen, I said, promote him. Let others emulate hard work, it will reward hard work. Others will emulate, promote him, he's not a senior manager. And while I made a statement that even Ghanaians themselves, all of us, it's a wishing behind, they don't like it, is that. The next day, when I took that action, I didn't scream, I didn't do anything, but I went off each, every office I entered and checked those who were present and those who were not. The next day, eight AM, there was a keeper. Everybody running to go and punch, alright. So one of my girls sent a video to the father. Said, daddy, look at what Uncle Ken has done. Now everybody is killed. We are killed, killing to go and register. This is what we need. In Ghana, productivity level is four point one percent. Four point one percent productivity level. Hell no, we gotta change it. We gotta change it. If productivity is four point one, then we zero. These same people want to be paid every month. They come to work at eleven, by twelve, they go to lunch. They eat for four, drink beer, sweat. They come back to work, three o'clock, they pack their things and go. Hell no. Every ministry will have this need to, you punch you, punch out. You punch you, you punch out. You cannot monitor everything, I randomly pick it and check those who came to work, how long they stayed in every day. This is how we can move the country. Discipline first. I went to Rwanda, talking to a king and the place is so neat. He said, you can't put anything on the ground. You can't. For the government doesn't have PhD, it's a ministry or design. And now we are quick to make reference to Rwanda, Rwanda, Rwanda. We have a lot of opportunities in Ghana that are untapped when it comes to tourism. I am going to use tourism, mechanized farming, agro-processing to change the fortunes of the country. First, Ghana is geographically positioned than any country in the world because we are center of the world. A large city, a long city, oh, it is need a theme. We don't make noise, we don't talk about it, we don't market our country. We need to market our country. One of my dreams for the center of the world is simple, center of the world hotel. The most beautiful hotel in Ghana should be center of the world. And the design is that every four floors will be a shape of a continent. Then at least four restaurants in every four floors. Four specialized cuisines from Africa. Four specialized cuisines from Europe. Four specialized cuisines from America. Let people go there and have fun, enjoy life. And it can be done. It can be done if, yes, I have visited Dubai, the Emirates are changing it, why can't we do it? I was flying from Tahrir to Akra and I saw where Rapra makes, the sea. And the blue sea is brown, we need to change it. We change it. Ghana, we have all these castles. And you see people easing themselves and the excuse is that. That's when they get fresh air. Beach rocks are the most expensive land on earth. You can't go to beach these days. The filth in our sea, Jesus Christ, we need to change it and I will change it. It is swimming in today, it is swimming in today, tomorrow, Coast Guard will take over it. The place, we need sea transport. I've been to Istanbul and Istanbul, they have sea transport. Istanbul is situated in two continents, Asia and Europe. Those who live at Asia cross with small boats to Europe and work. Those who went at Asia and live at Europe, cross to Asia and work. And the sea is called Bosporus. Sea transport. Those staying at Casua, it take them two and a half hours to get to the city. Well, if we can use the ferry from Casua to Akra, what are we doing? We can be creative. To ease traffic, we gotta be creative. You see our leaders speaking English, 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 meanwhile, their pocket is empty. English, big, big words. We gotta be practical. We gotta be practical. Alenina Castle and Cape Coast Castle. I dared tourism ministry to sell one of the castles to me and let me develop it for them to see. And my wish is to, the tunnel where these lakes pass through to the sea. You just take a picture of it and open it up. Because some people are afraid because of the size of the boat. So what you do is, you open it up and paste the original purchase. Then we have boats, rating point of no return. A blunt bang, food, nice drinks, but I, Bishop, should close his eyes. You want to make the money first. They will send a, you know, but a talk flash. You know, let the people have fun. You will ride from Alenina to Tahrir and back. Just like Forty Second Street, we go there. By the time I come back, within two, three hours, myself and my many kids, I would have spent about four thousand dollars. Why can't we do same? I have ideas. Have ideas. Ghana, Uganda, Tanzania, Kenya, Botswana, South Africa. They use this theme park, zoos, game parks, whatever. And last year, Kenya, Tourism, they made sixty billion dollars. And we have tourist sites more than Kenya. The oldest Bible a white man brought into Africa to spread Christianity is still at Alenina Castle, Alenina Catholic Church. We don't talk about it. Meanwhile, when you go to London, Museum, you see Western church mimicking with MDR. The people keep paying money to go and just listen. And we have all these things, it's there, just showcase it. This is the oldest Bible, the white man brought it and people pay money for it. That's a big money. Monepark. I was going to Wah and I saw these elephants crossing the highway. So I asked, where from this zone? This is Monepark. Say, Jesus Christ, our leaders don't smell money. We don't smell money. Because the money these countries, Uganda, Kenya, South Africa, Botswana, Tanzania, are making out of these animals. What are we doing? The only country in the world that a human being can see from crocodile without the bat is Ghana. But crocodile don't. And we don't do anything. We need affordable hotels. The world is affordable. Ghana hotels empty. You enter, you pay eight hundred dollars, the place is empty. Because they've loaded about eighteen different passengers who's crap it. Let it affordable. Let people come into the country. What are we doing? Tourism, tourism, tourism. The year twenty nineteen, when President Kufu declared the year of return. Between October to January, Ghana made one point three billion dollars. Our cocoa, today, they cannot even get one point three billion. Tourism, the revenue now generated from tourism are sure is more than the gold, cocoa and oil combined. But we've neglected this year. The only ministry with the lowest budget is Tourism Ministry. Because apprentices are all right, case closed. Tourism means needless. Come, they see the city is clean. Ghanaian workers are the front desk of most of the hotels. They don't smile. They fraud their faces as if you owe them. You are going to pay money for them to be paid. But they don't smile. They don't attract people. We need to train all these workers. To attract people. It is important. These are simple, simple practices that will let tourists come and go and sell our story for others also to come. What are we doing? As if they don't like their jobs. If you don't like your job, go home. Go home, as simple as that. So there's a lot we can do in Ghana to change Ghana. We have this around good lands. I personally believe that we should use the five northern regions, Afra Plains, Accra Plains, to feed the whole Africa. Forty-four years ago, my cousin was forced to marry a guy because the guy had two acres farm. And he married two women classmates. Two rape. Two rape. When you see a successful farmer in a village, he stole two acres, forty-four years ago, two rape. He stole two acres. Meanwhile, when you cross the border to Kudiwara. When you enter a plantation, five months, coconut, palm, pineapple, cashew. On the case, they ask the question in school. Which country is the leading producer of cocoa? You raise your hands, Ghana. Today, can we say that? Can we say that? Kudiwara produces over two million tons. While Ghana is struggling to produce eight hundred tons. With the population of thirty-two million Ghana and twenty-one million Kudiwara. And we have the leading producers. Why? We need to change it. We need to change it. You need a leader who has a drive. You need a leader who dreams big. You need a leader who is honest. You need a leader who puts his country first. You don't need leaders who think by virtue of the government, president and ministers, they should be the richest people in the country. That place corrupts right there. How can Biden say that because his president of America is richer than Elon Musk? It's not possible. He will go to jail. Case closed. Biden, as soon as he thinks like that, will go to jail because it's not possible. The only way for Biden to compete with Elon Musk is to take the whole treasury of America, which is also impossible. But Africa, Africa, the moment they are swimming, they want to be the richest in their countries. That is where our problem is. We need selfless leaders. At this point in my life, what do I need? My sugar is up anytime I take this rich food. So yesterday, a guy came to plant tomatoes and onion and chilium. Meanwhile, when I was young, I was still into eating. Now that I can afford, I can eat. You see, that is the world. So what am I going to steal or take your money to? Maybe I can tell you, in America here, all the rest they pay to me. Yesterday, I checked my county, it was thirty-five thousand cities, eight dollars. Just for school fees. When they pay the rent, they put it in the market and they pay them. I will not bring money from Ghana to come and save you. I will invest and create jobs for these youth. Yes, there are others who are taking monies, buying houses everywhere. I have all my houses before I went back home. I have at least seven thousand one hundred fifty-eight permanent workers. And my dream is to become president by twenty twenty-four, I should have twelve thousand permanent workers. I'm building a steel plant and the steel plant takes thousand Ghana dollars. The new, the biggest coal store in Africa is thirty-one thousand tons. For me, I'm also going to employ two fifty. I have a painting factory that is also coming out. I don't need Ghana's money. I'm just, I'm just going to make a difference in society. So that when I die, just as a lady told me, I will come to Ghana and vote for you. When you hear my head, it says that this is the man who changed Ghana. You fly just to come to my forum. That is all I need to do. I don't need money. My salary as president, I will set a presidential scholarship and give it to the needy students to go to school. That is all I will do. And I've calculated it. I'll strike an average of hundred thousand CDs a month for president. In twelve months, I'll make one point two million. One point two million, every child from one constituency, at least one child from one constituency, two hundred seventy-five. It means one child will get four thousand three hundred and thirty-three. And that will save him and let him go to school. Whilst meanwhile, I don't need the hundred thousand. The hundred thousand, at the end of the month, my kitchen staff, I pay them more than hundred thousand. But a child, a brilliant child, who doesn't have help, can benefit from that money. That is all I need to do. Ghana, we are more poor. It goes from being all the way to the north, Pusigak and Paga. The land is so flat, mechanized farm, not this African style. And whatever I'm telling you, I walk the talk. If you don't believe it, let's go to Ghana. I'll buy you a ticket, any doubting Thomas, I'll take you to Atibugwamontain. To go and see. If it's your village, then you know what I'm talking about. Myself and my partner, we have bought one hundred and twenty-five thousand acres of land with clear fifteen thousand acres cassava. We built a plant, we have employed nine hundred and sixty people from Atibugwamontain. So when you look at this land and somebody lives in the north and calls himself poor, how? How? We need to change our style of agriculture. We need to improve it, mechanize once. I was there a week or two ago, share butter accurately, they don't, they don't grow it, it comes by, it's unnatural. And they don't know what to do with share butter. I'm going to build a plant there. And we are going to block all those white people that come to take their share butter and we can sell it back to us. We have to sell it to them. If you give me opportunity, I will run Ghana like my business. Ghana has to make money. Every business, we want profit so that it can survive. Therefore, Ghana, we have to run it like a business. It is important. If not. Ghana oil. They use Ghana oil to base salaries. And I ask the question, before President Kufu discovered this oil, why aren't we paying Ghanaian workers? Why can't we use our oil production? And we pay workers for that. Those who go to work, sit there three hours, they take their bag and go and join all your money. We have a problem. And I won't like minded people like you all to come home. If you don't even want to work, be there as a consultant. Share your experience in America here with them. How as a leader will give you the opportunity? Because what I'm learning, the civil servant and the publicist, they don't want change. Ghanaians come back, they want to impart their knowledge they've acquired abroad. But the citizens over there do not give them chance and they are, they get frustrated. They come back. And you see Ghanaians elsewhere holding key positions in various countries. But in our own country, when we come, they are not given the opportunity. We must change that. We must change it. The only country that we prefer a foreign business to Ghanaian business. See this two gentlemen standing there. They have, I'm sorry, I have to tell the truth. Your experience should be given to others also to learn. They have a beautiful hospital and hotel. Meanwhile, they sit here, they work hard and take money here to go and pay their workers. Taking care of the hospital, managing the hospital and managing the hotel. Where does the money go? Every manager wants to steal from you to go and establish his own. We are naturally bombarded, I will tell you the truth. Because of that, we are not going to vote for you. So here, I will tell you the truth. We are naturally bombarded. That is why you see, you see foreigners have taken over our country. Ghanaian workers, we are like slaves. Slaves in the sense that when you go to Paris, when you go to Mexico, the low income jobs is what our citizens are doing. It is because of our mindset. When Kenyatta Paul set up a business, all they do is go, Kenyatta Paul, when you are, he will go react. They will steal from me, they will steal from me. By the time you realize, he has set up his own business and yours is corrupt. In fact, they dug up to the foreigners too. So what they are doing now is that. When a Lebanese establishes business, he goes to Lebanon, no matter how much it costs you. Even if it's an expensive labor force, you bring them to Ghana to mount the businesses for them. So when you go to Paris, for instance, you see all the key positions are being held by the Lebanese. Then the Ghanaians are standing there and they will follow you. Are you done? Are you done? You don't like your home? Our managerial area has broken completely. We need to build it again. That is why you have to come home and also help. But I was advising my two young men here that if you don't have time, don't establish business and leave it for your mother in Ghana. If you don't have time, don't establish business and give it to your uncle. If you don't have time, don't establish business and give it to your brother. It don't work. And I know most of you here are witnesses to what I'm saying. You sell money home, you sell money home for them to build a house for you. It is just in twelve years. Meanwhile, your cement, your iron rust, it diverted to his place, his site. I have an accountant in Niger, he went home, his own classmates have duped him and built a house out of the factory that is burned. That is why initially I said that we need to change the mindset. It's important. Without a mindset, no miracle, no Jesus Christ will come anywhere and change the country. So what I have done is, I have called some musicians and giving them ideas about patriotic songs. They should combine them, we do R and B, we do the gospel, we do everything. Then we bring all the artists, like we have a world, let them sing in the studio. Then after that, every radio station will play it in the morning to conscientize especially the youth that are coming. One of them that I love very well, Sisukubie, Mahoma, Somaibe, Yarina, you know, those things. When we're young, we're singing the national anthem. Let us sing the patriotic songs to conscientize these youth that are coming, to love our country. It is important. I know a trampoline, Wale Tualasa, Nifan Difan, Operation Feed Yourself. And it went to a point, that is the kind of leadership we need so that we can move our nation. Or where we are, where we are, if we don't change, if we don't change collectively, Ghana will never work. But besides that, you need a leader to steer that. Who is not afraid? And I'm not afraid, I'll tell you the gospel truth. People don't get punished in Ghana. They don't punish the wrongdoers. We need to punish them. If you steal, you have to go to jail. If you come home, you come to work late, you are fired. If you come home, you come to work late, you are fired. Discipline, discipline is key to our success, and that is what I stand for. So I'm asking all of you to support me, so that we make a difference in our country. We cannot continue to live like this and expect a miracle. God said he has created this in his own image. When you wake up in the morning, look into the mirror and ask yourself, "God, is that your image that I'm seeing?" "When you have a cat, you have a rabbit, or when you enjoy the bed, change it for me." And move. It is important. I'll be shocking, see, he put up this thing like. Here, he doesn't tell anybody not to go to work. He all go to work. But in Ghana, there's a church around my place where I live, on Tijawo. Monday to Sunday, I see women going from one walk to the other. So I slow down and ask myself, so who is going to feed these ladies? The paramour of the talent, the paramour of the talent. Said, when the rich man was traveling, he gave talent to three of his servants. And when he came back, he asked them, the first one, "Yes, what I gave you, what did you do?" Said, "Because I'm afraid, I was afraid of you, I gave it, said, give it to me." He asked the second one, and the second one said, "I went, I made some small profit." So, okay, hold on. He asked the third one, and the third one said, "I have borrowed the money you gave me." And the scripture says, "He shared their lazy ones' money to their children proportionately, proportionately, not equally." And the significance of that paramour simply means God help those who help themselves. So we have to work. And go to church on Sundays, I don't have a problem. Once in a while, occasionally, there is war. Something we have to do in the church, fine. Pastor, I don't know what you mean, I did BK arrest theology. So I know the Bible well. Anyway, you guys, my wife always, you only select where is good for you. But that is, that is not the truth. I just read it, you know, Fordham University is a Catholic church. You know, so most of the Ghanaian Catholic priests are trained in Fordham University. So, you know, when you go there theology, you do something. And I love therefore BK arrest theology. So I know a little bit about Christianity and Bible. But the way you go about it, sometimes we go overboard. And when I speak, they think I'm against religion. I am not, I strongly believe, my personally, I believe that anybody who thinks there is no God, to me, is a fool. In the sense that, the way I'm talking, 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 and I get tired in my sleep, I don't even know where I am or where I will be. That alone tells me there is a superior being. And that superior being, I can call God. So I believe in God. But this same God has given me grace to use, and we have to use it well. We are happy to be in America. People sit in the room and invented all what we are seeing here. Why can't we do it? We need to challenge ourselves as Black people. If a Ghanaian guy who was working at Zara Bakery, gas station, taxi driver, investor, can now have over seventeen thousand workers, you can do with you and do it better. So I'm pleading with you to give me full support, that I'm one of you. I was born into a bomb, and I'm crawling up, I'm not there yet. And I know with you I'll get it. And I will not, I will not disappoint you, because I believe in Ghana, Ghana first. Anybody who will not share my vision, that we have to sacrifice and build Ghana, you are not part of me. You should find your way. If you find your way, your wrong way, you go to jail. Yeah, you go to jail. It's important. We need to be disciplined, we need to be strict. That is the only way we can change our country. So, those of you who have heard Kenyatta Paul speaking harshly sometimes, when you believe in something and you know the truth, and some people deliberately, deliberately are rubbish in what they say. If you are in my shoes, you might probably act where I do. So if I have offended anybody, forgive me for the sake of our country, I needed to do that that time. And it was this. But today, they said, you should turn now, okay? Which I have. You have to look presidential, which I have. But the truth, I will always speak the truth. Probably I will not insult you, but I will laugh if you're a man or woman, if I chose you, yeah, we laugh. You know, so Ghana, ladies and gentlemen, is a beautiful country with opportunities. That with good leaders, we can move, with bold leaders, with honest leaders, we can move our country. So I want you to give me opportunity. Go out there, you are the bravest people, back home. Tell them, the man who can change this country is Kenyatta Paul. I have a vision, and my vision is, at least fifty percent of the industries should go to the north because of the nature of the land. We need that. Three days ago, I had an encounter with young exporters. And the way they were lamenting, we need to change our style of farming. With this woody side, the chemicals that are harmful to our body. Now, actually in America, they're saying that they will not allow them to bring the young anymore. Why? Because of the woody side. We need to change it. What we do, large-scale farming, with fertilizers and everything, we don't need a woody side. But these small, small farmers, they are very star. And woody side have made Ghana slaves. All the way, they go and spray it on the weeds, and they go back home. This is costing us. And look, I saw something there and I panicked. Could you believe that now we are growing garden eggs in America? Garden eggs? Gardeners, I saw it myself, at the African shops, garden eggs, that is dangerous. If China is also growing cocoa, that is dangerous. We have to think about this. And when I go back, I'm going to speak strongly against our style of farming. It's important. Even granates, I saw granates from here. I saw it myself, and I panicked, the issue. So all this mechanized farming that we are talking about, the time will come, we take advantage of the agwa, African growth opportunity at there. But you bring the things there, and the chemical content harmful to the human body, they will prevent us. What are we going to do? It is important. You need a leader who goes down to the ordinary people and share their problems with them, to know what is the problem. They talk about custom, the way custom officers treat them. When they bring their food staffs, because of agwa, it's free. You see, you might underestimate them, but the analysis they made to me, the argument is that they pay all these duties and ship the things here. Their money that is being transferred, it goes straight to Bank of Ghana, and they convert it into CDs. Such people should be given exemptions, because you are going to get the dollars.
God bless you, God bless you.
God bless you.
You see, you are taking duties from them, they bring you to American market, it's free. They transfer the money back home, and Bank of Ghana give them CDs. You give them CDs, Bank of Ghana rate is about, when you go to the market, excuse me, is about two point five basis point, which is not the five percent. What Bank of Ghana will give you, if you are going to change your mind? When you go to the market to buy your dollar, the difference is about twenty-five percent. How?
It's true, Papa.
How?
It's true.
And when you are arguing, another mistake in our budget today is that. I ask all of you questions. In America here, why they produce Ford, Lincoln, Cadillac, and whatnot, don't they sell used cars here? Ghana, now the law is that you cannot bring a year to five-year-old car because Ford, uh, BMW is going to produce brand-new cars in Ghana. Because Nissan is going to produce brand-new cars in Ghana. And when I was arguing with one guy, he said, "Come out and let's debate." The one, one instructor, he said, "You see, you go here, you don't work. Now, city as a minister, they give you money to talk, that's it, you don't know anything." And the way you are treating these traders, the direct tax, the direct tax through customs duties is more than anything in the country. Look at the number of people that are going to lose jobs. How many jobs are these new companies going to create? We didn't send out to analyze all these things, we just come out with policies, don't bring used car. Just twenty sixteen, MDP, we bought, I bought two hundred and forty used vehicles for campaign. Today you are in power, you are telling the Ghanaians not to buy used vehicles, used cars. First of all, what is the purchasing power of every Ghanaian in the country? How many people can afford brand-new cars? What I expect the Minister of Trade to do is to tell the new companies to use Ghana as a hub, produce these new cars, and sell it to African market. Because the Ghana market is so small, all these companies that are manufacturing brand-new cars, how many Ghanaians can afford brand-new cars? Jesus Christ. That is why you need a pragmatic leader, not a book. A leader who has been in churches with their people and knows the problem, and identifies and solves with their people. So please, and before you today, I can speak on and on and on, but I don't want to bore you. I want to say that for you to ask questions. Anything that baffles you, I'm open, no censorship, feel free, ask any question you want to ask. Anything that bothers, please, I'm ready to answer your question. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Honorable, our President Tobi. Ladies and gentlemen, before the questions, uh, we have to acknowledge some people here tonight. Uh, K S T from New Jersey is here with us. Ghanians for Honorable Ken Mohini Ejepon in Minnesota, the leader is here with us, Mr. Kujio Pado. Friends of Ken globally, wamso awa ha.
I would die for my country.
Thank you, thank you, Sisi, thank you. We are for Ken, we're white.
We are for smoking.
Yes, thank you. Madamasi, thank you for coming. And then those of Ebenezer Hospital, they are also here, yes. Ladies and gentlemen, Women in Business for Honorable Ken Mohini Ejepon, they are also here. MDP Tri-State, chapter of Washington DC, Virginia and Maryland, wamso wamua, wave, let me know you are here. Mr. Lembo, the questions and answers will come after the refreshment. I don't want you people to be bored with just talking, talking, so please. Well, DJ, can I have something and let's have some refreshment, please? And I need so few people to serve the executives for me, please. Honorable and go, thank you. Thank you, thank you, DJ. Madamasi, DJ, Mr. Lembo Abusia, uh, yeah, yeah. Uh, refreshment, you know, you meet me there, Phil, because we don't have enough time. We have a wonderful traditional dancer over here, and she want to showcase a talent to you all. Mr. Lembo Abusia, with a round of applause, let's welcome our traditional dancer, Lady May. Well, DJ, let's make it happen. Well, DJ, let's make it happen. Thank you, thank you, Lady May, Gera Se. Madam Asi DJ, Gera Se, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, this is a little embrace. Mister Lembo, one of the prayers behind this organization, um Afy Ena Waba. And to my man Akwai, he is the chairman for this program to give us a short remarks. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, please, with a round of applause, let's welcome Dr. Ebenezer Bahiné. Thank you for short remarks, thank you.
Your assistance, the student that, na na na, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Ebenezer Bahiné, as ordered for this. And I'm the CEO of Bahiné Specialist Hospital in Ghana. And we have our chief order Emmanuel and our beautiful wives. We take this opportunity to first welcome this great man, Honorable Kennedy Ohele Ejaapon, MP Assistant for Toulbit. We thank you for your service, Honorable, it was, it cannot fault us. It is a pleasure to have this opportunity to speak at all this important gathering tonight. Today, I'm focusing my presentation on the need to unite as one Ghana in everything we do. Most importantly, to build Ghanaian healthcare system in our country. My trip order, I, you have a dream, that one day Ghana will be the center and destination for medical tourism. That people from other countries, in other African countries can come to Ghana and our motherland to receive healthcare services. It is from this passion and love that you have for our nation that we build the Bahiné Specialist Hospital. But ladies and gentlemen, Bahiné Specialist Hospital is a business. There is a business with a purpose, and that purpose is to save lives and to provide employment to Afy. I'm going to talk about few things here. First, let's talk about mortality. Mortality is very high in Ghana, and I have a question for you all. Is it okay for a woman to die and give birth a child like that in Uba, Rabi said? Was this a new blessing or a bad one? Most girls go to the hospital to give birth and they never come back, and that brings her heart. It is for this reason that we built the most expensive and quality CT machines and is used to turn the hard weight of sita to mortality to children. Also, let's talk a little about infant mortality. Infant mortality, it is very high in Ghana. The statistics says that this year 2022, 32 out of every 1000 to the born in Ghana die. And after they be due on nine months in the womb in isolation. Is it rough for a child to die before they even live? And the answer is no. My mother of persons told us that my brother and I both had diseases, just the age of five months. And by the grace of God, we both survived, and that's why we are here tonight to talk to you all. Okay, now I'm going to talk a bit about prostate issues, prostate cancer. And the statistics says that 30 out of four black men would prostate cancer. Some down with knowing it, some down without even knowing it. And also, we talk about fertility issues. Fertility suffers a lot of homes in Ghana, and many homes are broken, many marriages are broken because the woman or the man, they can't even have children. That's why God is still up there, fertility center in Ghana, in our hospital, Bahiné Specialist Hospital. And we have a dream, a lot of people in Ghana have TV issues. That's why my brother and I brought this, since dialysis machines to our hospital to have those with TV problems. And we partnered with some doctors in India and America here to be the first hospital in Ghana to have TV transplantation in our hospital, and that is coming, and we are going there. Now, let's talk a little about medical tone, the baby man has built a response in Ghana. Ladies and gentlemen, the fun of medical issues in Ghana, I might get to talk about is medical tone. A lot of Ghanians, those who are people that you love, family and blood for medical care. Ghanians spend about 210 million dollars a year to see medical care, and we don't get sick. Some boys will come here to get local, they will come here for checkup. That's why my brother and I are building, they still got that, that grocery center. You have the, um, the CT scan in our hospital. So we have a dream, that somewhere in Africa, you've seen peace and prosperity. Somewhere in Africa, you've seen hope. Somewhere in Africa, you've seen the advancement of healthcare system. And that place in Africa is Ghana, and that place in Ghana is Bahiné Specialist Hospital. Ladies and gentlemen, let's all stand behind this great man Mister Kennedy Ejaapon to be the next president of Ghana. We thank you and let that be a sign of tonight.
Ladies and gentlemen, the CEOs behind Bahiné Hospital in Ghana, a round of applause for them, please. Ladies and gentlemen. It's Madame Cisila here, Cisila Boate.
Hey. I'll chant for a bit, DJs.
That's not far. Anyway, let's kick off with the questions, please. We don't have enough time, let's kick off with the questions.
Uh, may there were question, uh, may you answer, and uh, may you answer the question? And uh, may you wait, Honorable Asi? And may I mean, I will want to my answer, uh, Doctor Echeo.
Madam Asi, uh hold on to your question, we have to give Ochremah Asanti five minutes to perform for us. Ladies and gentlemen, we round of applause, please. Let's welcome Ochremah Asanti, thank you, applause, please. Legendary Ochremah Asanti, where he sold Ghana music out there in the seventies and the eighties and still going strong. One of the few Ghanians who were able to travel to places like London, Amsterdam, and he dealt with Osipisa. Ladies and gentlemen, legendary Ochremah Asanti will showcase something for 10 minutes for us. Thank you. Mister Lembo, move it me a good you move dear and Mister Lembo, why? While Ochremah Asanti is performing, get yourself some refreshment, thank you.
Oma ngana. And she man. And balu sena, o sieti, abo, o brye. Tu kuru sieti, e wa, na o ta fre. O sieti nyoda. E wa, na o ta fre, e di, tu kuru do do miye. E bo, ayodem. Koko ti koyo. Koko ti koyo. Sacra. Koko ti koyo, ye o ma bo fo. O shadri, yo, o seno trase. O kwa juma, nta. Si de biya, o no, o di ka kofi. Koko ti koyo, kwa juma, na tulu. Dele dele, dele dele, dele dele, kwa. Koko ti koyo, crash. Crash, crash, crash. Sacra, sacra. Koko ti koyo. Koko ti kyo, ni bali, ki, 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 ki. O fa, o biya. Koko ti kyo, 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 kyo. Koko ti koyo, shika, koo, su, ni pa. Koko ti koyo. O nea ba, na koko twa, adwa. Koko twa, kwa, ye o kote. Aso, o ko, ke roa. Ma gra, ke bo, fi, da, mto. Koko tya, aboa. O shadri, ni ne masi. O chwa, abo di. Koko ti koyo, be brye. Sacra. Koko ti koyo, politician. Koko ti koyo, police. Koko ti koyo, soldier. Koko ti koyo, lawyer. Koko ti koyo, doctor. Koko ti koyo, teacher. Koko ti koyo, professor. Koko ti koyo, drama. Koko ti koyo, mate. Flavito. For sacra, sacra. O nea fa, koko ti koyo, ni koko twa, adwa, e mu. Sacra, no o adye, esha.
Oh, Central Park, in that on the soos of the sheet, we'll send him. Please give a clap of hands to my father, Ochremah Asanti, Ghana's election. Anyway, please, as your, as your table been set, if your table is not set, can you raise your hand? If your table is not set, please, can you raise your hand? Alright, so are we ready for the questions and answers? Are we ready? But before we do, we do, uh, you remember Honorable had a long talk with us. Okay. Please, I listen, Doctor Bahiné.
Hello, hello, Mister Lembo, wamamaso wabaha. When Honorable was speaking, Honorable made a point that I think has to be emphasized. He said something that for his love for Ghana and his passion, in case helping us, he has said anything to offend anybody. He used this classroom in a church, you know, this is a church, but it looks like a club though. Yeah, it goes down. Honorable said that if he has said anything against anybody, through his passion for Ghana, through anger or anything, Honorable said, he's sorry. And I really want all of us living in this place to go home, that if anybody says Honorable might have insulted them or said anything to offend anybody, on this particular platform in these days, he used this opportunity to say he's sorry.
And I cannot defend him because I also have a lot of sorry, many stories to say, like you. But I want us to forgive them. And I pray that everybody that has any hurt or pain in his heart towards him, he has used this opportunity in the church to apologize. So whoever you are, whatever you want, I just want to emphasize that we should all look beyond the weakness of man and stand by him and push him somewhere. That one day, someday, this man sitting by us will be able to lead Ghana to the next level of life that we pray for. If you have accepted the apology of this man, can you all give a clap of hands to him? Oh, DJ, can you welcome us? Can you make a noise? Please, can you make a, go and put your hands in the house, bro? Papa, look, do something, do something. Go, brother, brother, go, show, go. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you, DJ. Mr. Remo, so, we were here, oh, here, sorry, Eddie, I am in birthday party, a year, fiftieth birthday, and I said, maybe shower, brother, but my dear, now, ever for me. See, I mean, I make a party hall, who is, why, Madam Assey? Uh, it's time for questions, ladies and gentlemen. Nana Donko, prepare to start with us. Uh, Pachoma, give me a photo. Can somebody do me a favor? And please, write the questions down. Any parting, any question is very important. And when my Honorable, I'm from Gofyou, don't underestimate. Nana Donko, it's time for you to ask your question, please.
Honorable, I am good, I share. Uh, me, yeah, Roger, uh, it is the Facebook viewers. In the power, I'm sure you do, so, um, we be brave, this our stuff. Uh, be answer, make a book. Me wa, Paula, I am, you are, for artistic. Now, America, dear, me move, and boy, be brave, that, I know. What would they, I took to Queen, ah, what would they buy you? And my, I back, I'm from, you need say, you're money, guy, but what would I am? Uh, Ghana, you, you, this, uh, and we will, we do, yeah, this, Rawa, who's the best film? See, we, person, we, this, I was saying, so, you are, come, boy, now, you are, Tom, now, we be here, president, uh. And then, and now, we be here, and you are, father, Paula, what would you, um, I can? Facebook viewers, of course, Galan say, oh, you again, I will come. And now, you, ta, what only, in, too much, so, again, I'll be here, into the question, eh, you be answer, make here, back home. And now, me Facebook viewers, so, what would they, uh, that's Honorable.
Yo, uh, thank you very much. I've been saying. Ghana, the health system, we need to change a lot of things. Now, question, yeah, but it's, no, pray me. Ghana, we don't have any provisions, uh, in taking care of autistic, and I said, this aim before. I think, sir, we should, as a government, make a policy, say, oh, more, oh, mere, the same, oh. Say, which may, eh, yeah, policy, uh, because of free, dear. Then, disabled phone, she will also be given opportunity. And yet, medical care, by dedication, surprisingly, I see a lot of cripple, no, ah, what you think, which, uh, almost, this, this, uh, I want, think. Me, what, lah, ah, obi, eti, eh, co, eh, co, yeah, human, eh, yes, car. But we are, oh, stress, uh, Ghana, you don't blame him because opportunity has not been given to him. I think, sir, it's a very good question. And for those, say, who see how best we can do also to help the disabled, a very, very important. The question, I say, yeah, me, politicians, uh, we take care of such things, we are, but in a, but, but, I see a problem here, um, to me, can do, then you have to help. To me, he say, say, it, me, ma, obi, help insurance. Now, oh, yeah, medical attention. Extra efforts should be put in, uh, more contributions should go to the disabled, uh, now, parents, no, so, oh, more, I know, that, uh. Now, be brave, no, yeah, to me, ma, we more education, to, which was, oh, more, you, eh, preaching, still. Now, we, to me, yeah, whereas, uh, and they are, no, eh, co, messes, who, we, in, I mean, ma. We must say, my baby, ba, well, autistic, only, no, no, I will, more, no, oh, probably, I'm saying, say, eh, or call, maybe, I'm saying, no, you know, system, no, should be able to help. And at least, national health insurance and free education, actually, say, anything the government will focus on, so, they, which, yeah, it is, I was saying, it is, eh, one. And we make sure, say, we put a policy in place to help disabled. So, if, uh, anybody, oh, more, eh, is in, but, the things they can do, you have no idea, and you will give them that opportunity. Two, government say, personally, personally. And who say, Ghana, for, everything, I, yeah, small scale mining, ah, almost say, so, they are, I agree with them. And I pray, the way you are destroying our water bodies, if you say, oh, more, you know, no, they should be registered under one body, like, regulate, and make it, so, say, they don't destroy our forests, they don't destroy our water bodies. And no, they, who say, so, bad, they are, I disagree. And you, okay, don't, don't, I mean, I don't. But me, ba, me, I said, you be good, oh, what, you ma, you be good, government say, say, they are, on cost, but, you may register, and legalize, amabu, you don't want to trade, papa, say, me, ah, oh, call, na, ba, na, na, oh. You see, mining activities that are going on, you don't see what we see in Ghana here. Argentina, they are, quite, eh, they're, of say, so, and so, they're, saying, yeah. We have to regulate it. But I'm, be honest with you, if you want the problem of government say to be solved, it to be solved, but read my lips, most politicians are involved, most of them, this, oh, MPP, NPC, oh, more, you know, yeah, government say, and, um, to, and, ah, oh, oh, yeah, waits, eti, eh, pa, eh, me, yeah, government say, eti, me, that, you said, for, register, small scale mining. Now, so, that, say, so, yeah, I'm afraid, the law will deal with you. Because, and so, eh, we, almost, say, so, and maybe, maybe, ah, Ghana, you have, oh, control, so, I'm, which, he said, in the, oh, we should not allow that to go on. And you, oh, more, can, government say, eh, yeah, you have a good, ma, you may make issue, say, you all go under small scale mining, when God likes, I bet, me, I'm protecting your forest, I'm protecting you, and only, anyone, the problem, because, I feel, say, Ghana, for me, should be making them up. With this, government say, Indians, Arabs, they come in and give them money, no, who have, of say, so. I went to Dubai, about two hundred and seventy-five shops. Me, you know, catch them, say, go, with Ghana, eh, never, ah. How? Oh, the, eh, regular, I say, I didn't know, that's a, can, maybe, Ghana, for, ah, I don't have a problem at all. And gee, maybe, who is, say, I was saying, eh, regulate, in your, ma, you make issue, say, they all go under, so, this. And now, I saw, yeah, for, help, I correct, uh, oh, more, so, eh, me, brave, eh, yeah, papa. So, Ghana, we are naturally bombarded.
Thank you.
Naturally bombarded.
Thank you, Honorable. Nana, thank you. Uh, Mr. Remo, uh, we only need, if you have a question, please join the queue here. Only one question, please, because we have so many people. Only one question. Make sure your name, who you are, what kind of section do you work with? Thank you.
Um, yeah, you can bring that question, it's also important, one minute. You see, I feel so guilty, say, me, my girls, six. Oh, my, really, invest, uh, I tell America. The family, yeah, oh, moving, we is cool, now, we be, oh, you, ma, eh. With this loud mouth, and could, eh, eh, well, Ghana, as a politician. And for like, we is cool, six years, not Honorable, to them, I'm enjoying. Five years, continuing, I'm enjoying, maybe, they are eight years. And they, maybe, I've started going around, educating the youth, we call it guardian council. Ah, me, true, the problem is, sometimes, obi, passing, we is cool, say, you are, in business administration. Now, oh, yeah, great, ma, he sits over for six years. Me me catch you say, anya kokokura, obi ya mato. Say me call you a habit, ma obi ya New Jersey. Eh, reburu, eh la mokoka say, homestar bread, papa.
Mika, she's here.
Okay. There are a lot of people, a couple of homestar bread. Call obi ya your most senior comedian, na kofa reburu. Eh, you will succeed. Now they can serve as the emperor. You see the difference that you make. Obi ya apen, apen ya guma, me pe police, me pe migration, eh saturated. So, and they are dedicating themselves. Obi ya granya, this is me, na mato, I be here, eh, street is so mehoga. Eh, si mensa so, up to secondary from three. Na mato, yes, pick a chocolate, that's a nice, yes, raw. Panina. Yes, pick a chocolate, that's a nice, yes, raw. You see, that is the beginning of a businessman. That is how I love a way, no brother, I catch you ah. Omo, that may we already, na me back to corner, and omo, obi ya make it. So, obi ya, na mato, obi ya my street is so, yeah, man, find there. And here we are today. And you, you will think, so, they have to take their destiny into their own hands. Then again, government policy be, eh, na, eh, eh, eh. Many few, M P P mistake eh, 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 eh. Na kwa, ofa obi kota, obi ya human ministries, otio, obi ya guma, me aman is seven hundred, na okofi. That amount of money, oh, senka, eh, the establishing industries. Eh, ma, even if you employ out of the hundred thousand, twenty thousand permanent workers, eh, and eventually come down. Obi ya say. So, it's employment, employment, employment. Next, eh, industries, industries, industries. We need more industries. Obi ya, I say, don't praise, na me, obi ya, I disagree. Because we have one district, one factory. It is an upgrade process, eh, eh, eh. Say, eh, encourage you, na, eh, the practice sector, eh, yeah, the meeting, eh, eh. I mean, as a question, I was very good in the center. I have a problem with development bank, I will be. What be a development bank, eh, just circa eight hundred million dollars. Now, instead of promoting businesses in Ghana at a lower interest, I know. Now you are giving the loans or the money to commercial banks. For businesses to go to commercial banks for loan, is the defeatist approach, right there. Why didn't you put systems in place for what development bank, eh, to give out the loans to the businesses, eh, 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 interest, eh, eh. Now, obi ya, commercial banks, eh, eh, oh, interest of two percent on the eight, which is better. In the commercial bank, when the business man, eh, every bear fourteen. Can he compete with Indian company, oh, kati loan of two percent, three percent? American company, eh, eh. You see, so, right there, no industry, and therefore, our youth don't have the jobs today. Many few say, they should give lower interest to the businesses, so that they can employ more people. And so that there will be no stress on government, eh, where so the police, where so the immigration, where so the fire. So, and you have been said, soft loans to businesses, eh, eh, general, industries, eh, eh, eh. And that is what I started, eh, eh, make issue, eh, in just wait, eh, eh. Because, obi kati loan of thirty-two percent, eh, eh. Thirty-two percent. And eh, guma, ma, obi ya, eh, 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 eh. And eh, me no, eh, many few say, we should be bold, eh, say, eh, straight money, eh. Ah, eh, this is here, eh, eh. Say, what you ya ma, obi ya guma, what you ya, eh, eh, eh. And many few say, industries, industries, industries. That is the only way, eh, eh.
Thank you, Honorable. No problem, Chok, one question, we don't have enough time, but I must say, your name.
Thank you very much, Honorable. Your friend, Kingsley, M P P, New Jersey, eh, eh, the answer, Kings Jersey Radio and TV. Eh, I came here possibly because met you.
You don't have an option. So I have to speak the truth. And you matter, and it's your year. And who do you want? And this is what I hope there.
Thank you, Honorable. Thank you. Mommy.
Good evening, President, candidate Jopan. President, what's wrong with you? Me, I'm a senior, who come here today? Uh, big Western region. Western region, I think Pierre organ me behalf of Western. You know, since so who you know? Baby, baby, I met with other president. Of course, I produce CK man. I produce, uh, my pension. I sense every country, oh, when you're moving to the other one. I sense so who I order a creation, and he's a botan. Now, the president is there. I person who want you order a Western with any regulation will be Pierre with that crazy. Get a first law. Now, my president is there, when you there, even as in, which was seen after crazy. If the Western region, even as in, no bottom why you order boy. More what that man can achieve. And now it's like, there's nothing in Western region. And when you are pay your, of that crazy. Uh, be Pierre a cocoon. Yeah, 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 we in power, I was friend, the city area, me in a Western region. Even as a party, now everything. Who who to why you was having a much one way with because I president. But I was a party, who who to why you Western regions was going? Talk about the problem. Because this is no more there, this is not there, TVS is not there. Be Pierre a cocoon. Talk about the problem. You see, even as neighbor, who to my man, here to here rest up as. But that's it.
Honorable, what I want to know about. Yo. Talk about it. First of all. Why also you, madam Bato Tieni, why also you a part of the problem? Part of the problem because maybe, oh, you la, in here, there, there is a. Oh, you are the man. A lot of investors, a whole Western region, trying to put down stretches here. That running as us. They were a president before, and this cover, oh, yeah, obviously shoot two prices. All these oil companies, you know, they say, oh, we check on the water, and nobody drop on. And back a human, our gun. Because your rent is too high. Because, only million rush. Oh, what they are, what we see, you know, a whoa, a beer, and you know. And you're talking. They say, look at. I don't know, me, but I present, eh, for commission, that running. How about? My boy, eh, right, oh, yes, eh. Eh, no, I'm a big journey, we in here, eh, go for buy. Again, GMDS, madam Bato Tieni, GMDS. We are moving the headquarters from Accra to Dakar. And it's almost complete. So, ocean more. Over pass here, here they, sign no hydro, eh, yeah, yeah. We are improving the place. Ah, they're bad, oh, my chance, I bet you also. I be up in China, yeah, my top ready, let me say. We call Western, best Western hotel. And now, the China is so, I'm not bad. The sea is so guilty for, but there's nothing. Everyone I don't serve. The whole place was die. They said, what? Did that brother, man, can bro, what, can bro, what, can bro? Both of my, who pray here, not even lights. No lights, oh, me to hold you now. We need to make the place empty. At least, that running, maybe a Western, best Western one here, that is, you know, for bad. We need nice, affordable hotels with both, ah, resort and casa. Maybe a the China hotel, a share in Sio Nusu San. That is what I thought first. So we need a resort, oh, that running. Why that running? Is that? Who you are from Accra, straight. Within twenty-five minutes, no one like me. And you will be a, if you own, okay, so, oh, that, that running, eh, easier. Okay, so, oh, call in Zemawa. So, they call at what, we give him, Rose, you know. Oh, but I was see, prior, yeah. And they are no San, and you are tragic. But that running is so dear. Who far play now, who about? So we have to develop a nice resort, our hope, to attract, a deep family to set first, now, cement for no, eh, bad, okay. Uh, other things are, we can do. The problem is, maybe a not come, oh, most of my lawyer, met can. And you're the kind of ministers they appoint, that is the most true truth.
Yes.
And you have, oh, for the fee, oh, really fee, send me a fee here. And not just I was gonna be a Ghanaian, so, I don't mean here. Don't mean yet. Oh, I guess, yes, yeah, yes, yeah, I go in a more, oh, yeah, you buy. And you man, oh, yeah, but, well, because we see how we do, we can see it go. What's new address? Now, Ghana, mine, you know, the more, okay, to address. So sometimes, the problem is not only the president. It is the appointees, oh, we see. So, and you, your ministers, near you, wow, oh, who have done that running? What are they doing? They are bad, who makes you a sir? That running, yeah, the first, they are, man, they're a bad. A nice crystal, hotels, best San Sosa, is eh, Bahamas. Yes. Thank you, Honorable. The man with the vision, let's elect the businessman. We have elected the lawyers, the doctors, the economics, and the country is still the same. Let's try a businessman. Messer, I'm, I'm Kofobi, me be sad, me say. Now, I say, eh, Louie, eh, eh, San, eh, Wah, eh, Meman, Samah. But only, the kind courtesy of Ken, oh, he need to phone. Oh, my, oh, pay, eh, Mema, in Suna, no, no, Monkwa, what, Ivan, Ma, eh, my, eh, Ma. Oh, I think, eh, Papa B, eh, Jina, Yedama, see, thank you.
Uh, Bato, eh, Frey, um, George, eh, Jeter, Che. Um, Honorable, me, 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 me contribution, I don't really have a question. I was saying, come here, me question, ma, but because of only, man, call. Only, me three hundred and seventy-six dollars from IBM, about. So, um, yeah, me person, make can you know, me say. Oh, who should you pay, Wah, you know? In the Papa Kupia, representing about, um, fifty to seventy-five people, eh, our Ghana. Because, eh, who be Wah, eh, Nipah, Osho, more Ghana. And now, oh, no, no, so, eh, Nipah, oh, no, so, oh, my, it's like that, it's like a food chain. Um, Honorable. Eh, who be a, when you, Wah, Habia, yeah, yeah, ready, eh, Frey, um, Hope for Life, ready. Now, you cost whoa, eh, just what's among that. People really love, but I have a little expectation, just advice for you. Eh, oh, yeah, too emotional. You are like me, I say it how it is. And I don't really have a lot of friends, but it's okay, bye. Now, she say, baby, I work, listen to this advice so well. Baby, I work, you know. Work, NPP for pill. Yeah, pill, without candidate, but there is no NPP. Simply because if you decide to fear. If you decide to fear from say, own support to NPP, you may be, I hear, you're willing, John Juan, collapse the NPP. And Mr. Say, do you, would all, would you consider to be a vice president? Because you have heard that Nkofobi have started advocating for you being the, you taking the, uh, uh, the vice presidential slot. I know you wouldn't take it, but take that position for us. Because if you are there, you can control issues. You're from the George, eh, Jeter, Che, eh, Jeter, Che. Maybe.
Yeah. Thank you.
Uh, thank you for your advice, but, uh.
Honorable, now, come in, by answer question, what do you call, man, come by answer, what do you call?
My, 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 me answer, no, okay, sir. Look, really. Me, yeah, politician, dear. Eh, indeed, I said, my, yeah, president, Jalo. I have enough to live on. And the media have come to say. But say, make us say, now, me vision. Who need baby, do, many, own share the same vision with you. I prefer to stay away. In fact, I prefer to stay away. Because, say, no, make us say, I give, we, my, my, my experiences is working. So who call India, my, yeah, for India, the most areas, maybe a very cool up, maybe a very rock. I read here, yeah, the sugar cake, by product, eh, generating electricity. Every sugar plant in India generates its own power. Now, me, me say, yeah, if I sugar cake. Yeah, yeah, sugar, we are, yeah, they are molasses, eh, few, and they are, yeah, really. Eh, spirit, we are, hard little. Yeah, we are, yeah, they are chipboards, after the chipboards, yeah, they mean, eh, generating power. And the SS power is connected to the national grid. But if your president doesn't share the vision with you, now, I'll be commercial, now, bro, fuck, bro, fuck, no. I wouldn't get that, really.
Thank you, Honorable. Thank you. Thank you, Honorable. If, if you are born to be CEO, never accept the position of supervisor. Honorable. The part, yeah, for the cuckoo, dear. Yeah, we bad man, come see. Those we are bad to many. Make us say, we strange you. Someone may, can make, eh, name, I mean, it's a album. There is foreign affairs, yeah, they want, which we are, eh, one. Number two, oh, my, one Ghana, in terms of Chinese, also a member of, you know, like. Chinese, you know, business, whatever, maybe you have affiliation with Chinese business, which is okay, never. The aspirants, you know, are make us say. Yeah, they are all, I would say, I say. They be a, yeah, you're man, oh, ah. And number two, even crown, you're really chances, you know, and that everyone, ah. But, then we are a very super power. We are bully, a bully, and she said, eh, never, eh, the back, ah. What you say? Okay. Never, eh, the back, ah. Move, they are to the sense, eh, move, ah, you know, you don't do anything about it. Because you know, my, turn, I say, ah. You know, duty, no, eh, the back, oh, much, eh, too much. What you say? You are the camp, ah, you know, the much, a little, where they are not, eh, project. Number two, can I say, China for, eh, eh, can I say, you know? I did a plan, they be fast, whoa, they bet me, eh, to say, can I say, the so, with that, eh, Chinese, Chinese, my, oh, back, ah. Oh, need baby, I say, we also, oh, oh, need baby, I'm so, eh, we, eh, so, eh, I'm, see, eh, can I say, eh, hi, eh, eh, so, I, eh, people. I did, I'm, but you, eh, 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 eh. And I know, say, LPP, NDC, they are all doing, can I say? Pass, I'm, eh, John, eh, the part, oh, I make myself, I'm a gentleman, even my son, you hear, the other, me, oh. Honorable, eh, 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 bad, when they grew up. They grew up a bad man. So, what, this year, no, I did, I'm, eh, for, can I say? Regardless, you only believe, eh, John, actually. Actually, yeah, can I, eh, 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 eh. I have it. I'm a man, they be fast, whoa, they bet you, can I say, eh, eh. Say, I'm, never, I was here, dear, fifteen years, we are, can I say, go to jail. Regardless, we are LPPD, we are NDCD, we are chairman, we are president, therefore. As someone, they can, ah. Honorable, where the, yeah, question, eh, you foot, oh. And you, oh, bad, you, you want, you, eh, you go, my, eh. Oh, no, I go, good, eh, eh, that's it. Yeah, Honorable. This may, eh, bad, many. Maybe, maybe, oh, bad, what do you own, you know, because, maybe, when, I mean, I call, eh, me, I don't to believe. The part, oh, Kakra, me, this, me, be sad, eh, say. Make us, ah, but you're for, you know. Yeah, the me, eh, Papa, ah. Now, oh, the, yeah, man, eh, bah. See, we are cafra, eh, see, eh, eh, support, eh, eh, see, eh. Oh, bah, nah, who be the agent, where do, where do? Eh, who be, oh, baby, eh, no, the, eh, too soon. Oh, I could, yeah, duty. What you have duty, eh, 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 man, ah, kasam, once, eh, then, eh, how much, eh, 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 eh. Per, wow. And then, yeah, eh, how much, eh, the, we say, customer, eh, be, oh, can, eh, but we say, eh, GNT, be, oh, can. Oh, person, I tell me, say, oh, I'm, oh, listening, you know, oh. Eh, GNT, eh, to be, eh, that public, eh, my, yeah, we will say, maybe, I give, we, eh, back, ah. Me, could attend, I meet, eh, ten cities, me, could, eh, meet, eh, twenty cities. Now, you, eh, bad, eh, drone, oh, you, yeah, man, eh, the, eh, you, you, eh, boy, eh, eh, eh. Now, eh, GNT, eh, come, eh, customer, eh, some, eh, question, eh, you know, eh, who do, eh, actually, eh, 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 bro.
Calm down, calm down, let's behave well. We will come back again on the questions. We are cutting across the program, the questions will come again. Calm yourselves down. Thank you, Mommy.
Honorable, me Pacho. I didn't buy a car, eh, eh, Ghana farmer business, yeah, worker. Eh, Beni said, port or no? Ya teach you say, ya tongue porto. N D C for a tongue porto. Eh, this is a woman baby, eh, eh, fine baby, that for sure. Who better sure port to my ya tongue? Yeah, but if you say, we be tonight, we go by eh, 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 share with you, I want say a woman. Ah, what do you eh? Eh, this, eh, we be baby, like, man, no, brain no say. My point actually, they go fear. They near my one day go. Yeah, the, I gave you a true set demonet. Not Ghana for the, yeah, boy, yeah, three weeks per. Now, when they tie your hand, now your book are not option. Now, we got to four, four, four. Now, when this is for us, so. What would they near my back Ghana, next China form, they near my baby. Me just said demonet, you be hurry, damn it eh. Damn, I listen in here. I didn't see my yeah, Ghana, ya T M M. No port to my ya tongue. Honorable, Oba, Oba, to me, I am a baby. Am I, I'm a name, you do it, you know, eh, to me, I perform am I. If you say do it, you need the no person. Eh, who you are by, eh, who you go? Maybe I say.
Honorable.
Eh, no greenie, greenie. Eh, yes, information. N D C for N to the port here. To the morning, they said a camera creature. N D C among to the port. Say, M P P for, and a media propaganda against M P P for. N D C for am against it, it's not true. To be honest with you. Eh, private company, sir, Bolare, no, ah, Obobere. And then, when you talk efficiency, only efficient, eh, chain, Gabora. I have to be honest, because twenty-four hours, eh, this is the, yeah, you know, continues. Continues. And what they, what are going to be, ah, way in America, yeah, more N D C for a muscle. Oh, more N to me, them a port here. But, and call the, yeah, call the, 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 eh. Say, ya tongue them a port, yeah, tongue eh, again, okay.
Hey, tell it.
Let's really, eh, be a. Them a port, ah, ya tongue, even ya tongue, it has nothing to do with the duty. Duty, a buying or teaching the duty. It is only a buying, ah, some carrier, and then, eh, can then farm far, them a port, and got it. I admit that duty is really ridiculous. I'm more sheer al kasa. But it's all because Ghana government leader has failed. We have all failed to make sure, eh, the informal such as program. Eh, to me, ah, DJ taxes, eh, be a. Why say me? Contractor, O C, maybe steel plant. Just machines, you know, O D C signal, eh, a cost of eleven point eight million. Or move your labor charge, eh, two point four. He doesn't pay tax. Obey our, eh, tomorrow, may two, hundred seventy thousand, oh, dear tax. So, we have to drop all these loopholes, seal it, obey clear tax, really. So that there's stress on duties, duties, you know, so, eh, eh, go for. The easiest way, eh, we take tax, eh, eh, duty. Because, eh, when they went here, yeah, my own farm, go to, now, eh, the leader, eh, eh, so. That must change. Eh, make sure many policy, eh, this is, we are plumber. I learned that from Kodevoa. A plumber, you need a license to work as a plumber. Eh, this is me, and I'm in the high as a plumber. I look at your license, or certificate, or tax, I do number. So, whatever money I pay you, I report. You give me a receipt, eh, just say, who's ah, how to save, oh, dear. This is a tax you have to pay to the government. Plumber now, O D C catch a grant, you know, or move, move, over national health insurance. Oh, dear tax. Of all these areas, eh, if we look into it carefully, and be bold, and say, eh, everybody, ah, we here, you man here. Also, oh, dear tax. If he say duty, you know, eh, eh, go for. Again, if our export, eh, to me, I'm a exporter, eh, see me importer. Eh, then, yeah, dollars, see me, pounds, see me, euros, ah. Eh, eh, much stress on, eh, see me, eh, eh, go for, because. Many cost of four, yeah, you say, oh, greenie, eh, oh, my eh. Maybe for greenie money, they back. Instead of, oh, person, oh, market trading, eh, eh, here, eh. Give a flat rate for about three months. For the businessman to stretch, eh, say, in the next three months, eh, you know, my, when they back. This is the amount of money I'm going to pay as a duty. But you just don't tell me, eh, who, who careless management. Ah, my dollar, see, I go, eh, say, my dollar, I cost, eh. But the new man, eh, go ah, now, who the current dollar rate, now, we have, who, what, oh, they may be back. Who to be back, and I would be here. That must change. I was saying government policy, eh, to me, eh, three months, and now, six months. This is constant rate. Because, eh, that time, I would be, oh, my, oh, dear, dollar cost, ah, now, would you charge me duty? I was say, oh, two month, three months, six months, now, would be, eh, to me, planning. Say, yeah, oh, by you, eh, you man, or the new money, eh, back, or instead, the first three months to six months, eh, eh. This is how my duty, I'm going to pay. Now, on their planning. So, but so, I had hope increases, increases, you know, oh, the dollar, eh, you know, eh, more businesses. And then, these are some of the ways, eh, eh, I'm not chance, eh, eh, back. Who give a flat rate for three months, for business and for life.
Thank you. We down with the questions for now, we will come back for that. Ladies and gentlemen, he is an award-winning musician from Ghana. They came in the game and changed the face of hip-hop and high-life in the L A two thousand. He has won over twenty awards home and abroad. He has heard of Ken O'Neal, eh, Japan, been here for the love he has for Honorable Ken O'Neal, eh, Japan. He decided to come in tonight and perform two songs for him. Ladies and gentlemen, let's welcome the award-winning musician all the way from Ghana. The people that came in and changed the face of the Ghana music. Ladies and gentlemen, Kofi Inti.
That's right. I'm American, eh, eh, Pacho, eh, Pacho, eh. American flow, me cheer, we did not. Me be kind, eh, cheer, me papa, eh, Honorable. Young me come, man, I know, you see, and me, we cheer Thai food, you know. Eh, say, me, me, Honorable, eh, you know, eh, eh, me, Honorable, cheer, oh, come, please, eh, eh. Me, me, say, eh, eh, I'm a candy, you know, obey eh, eh, obey eh. Me, me, back, eh, eh, me, me, some question, eh, eh, me, eh, you, eh, 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 eh. Oh, da, yeah, who eh, oh, near, my, who eh, do I, eh, come eh? My home, that's yeah, say, yeah, yeah, oh, come, say, eh, Jimmy, oh, it's my keep break. Why I can't do it now? Eh, see, can I, eh, eh, because, eh, who eh, papa? But if you say twenty twenty-four, young go for, be, eh, okay, eh, for papa, eh, 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 eh.
DJ. That's right. Aba, ah, eh, ba, ba. Sa, 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 sa. Me, me, do it, eh.
Me, me, do it, eh. Oh, never be a, oh, never be a. Oh, do it, eh.
Come on, everybody. Oh, the baby. Oh, the baby. Oh, the baby. Oh, the baby. Oh, the baby, eh. Oh, the baby. Oh, the baby, eh. Oh, the baby.
Oda, man, cheer me, man, cheer me. Sawa, man, cheer me. Oda, man, cheer me, man, cheer me. Sawa, man, cheer me.
Come on.
Oda, man, cheer me, man, cheer me. Sawa, man, cheer me. Oda, man, cheer me, man, cheer me. Sawa, man, cheer me, oh.
Okay.
Me, eh, eh, the reason, oh, so, eh, eh, the reason. I come, eh, you know, oh, we know, I'm here, no, eh. I come, eh, you know, oh, I'm here, no, eh. Oh, the, oh, quite here, wait, eh, eh, get it, eh. Oh, the, oh, quite here, wait, eh, eh, get it, eh. Me, eh, just say, oh, man, be cool, oh.
Ah, eh.
Me, eh, just say, oh, man, be cool, oh. He said Romeo, Juliet, Romeo, Juliet.
I want to say.
Romeo, Juliet.
Ah, eh, oh, the, oh, me, don't do. Oh, me, oh, me, so, eh, eh.
Romeo, 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 eh, so, eh, eh. Oh, the, eh, who eh, oh, near, my, who eh, do I, eh? My home, that's yeah, say, yeah, yeah, oh, come, say, eh, Jimmy, oh. It's my keep break, oh, the, oh, break. It's my keep break, oh, the, oh, break. Eh, da, my, eh, da, my, eh, da, my, eh, da, my, eh. Me, eh, just say, eh, eh, oh, my, eh, oh, the, eh, eh. Me, eh, just say, eh, eh, oh, my, eh, oh, the, eh, eh.
Come on, come on, come on.
Oh boy, I get it, oh boy, I get it. Oh bo me di, oh bo me di, she di ba ba. Oh bo me di, oh bo me di, she di ba ba. Na eh kum mi. Ah, ah, ah. Two, three, eh, ah. Oh bo me di, oh bo me di, she di ba ba. Na eh kum mi, meti no ri, she di ba ba. Na eh kum mi, meti no ri, she di ba ba. Na eh kum mi, meti no ri, she di ba ba. Na eh kum mi, meti no ri, she di ba ba. Ora su wo. Meti no ri, she di wo. Ora su wo. One, two, three. She di ba ba, ora su wo, ora no wa. Eh wo, she di ba ba, ora su wo, ora no wa. Na eh kum mi, meti no ri, she di ba ba. Ora su wo, meti no ri, she di wo. Ora su wo. That's right. Young boy. I don't know you. We did, we did. Oh yes, she di ba ba, I do love you. I said I'm gonna love you. Ora su ba eh. Oh yes, she di ba ba, I love you. She do not stop. Oh my darling, oh my darling. Oh my darling, oh my darling. Oh my darling, oh my darling. I love you. Oh, oh, oh. Oh yes, she di ba ba, I do love you. You're brave. You're deep, dear. Come here. Two, three. I'm in the sky, I love you too dear. Only your voice, I love you too dear. I love you, I love you. Only your voice, I am not. I love you, I love you. I love you, I love you. I love you, I love you. Just for a round of applause from the man that's the co-fitter. Alongside our fellow. Under the, under the surface. Rocking on the dance floor. Don't try to laugh for a young. Nobody ask me, we are the top. We run this, this is our way. We are the top team, we run this, this is our way. Young boy now. I love you, I love you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you. I feel I'm gonna go back. Thank you. I must say, I don't see, I'm not seeing. Friends of Ken Global. Eh, Madame Cecilia Wati, any, now be the chief boy. One back as a career. Friends of Ken Global. Thank you, Cecilia.
Thank you, thank you. Friends of Ken Global. Friends of Ken Global. We will die for our country, justice for all. Yo, I must say for Friends of Ken Global, my name is Enewa. All Friends of Ken Global members. Friends of Ken, Friends of Ken. Friends of Ken, Enewa. We are for him so hard, we are for him. Friends of Ken Global. And Enewa. Yeah, John, yeah, Kasa, yeah, honor both him. And your best lover, Samra, yeah, Kasa, you know. And, uh, what more I would find. And Samra, yeah, Kasa, you know. I must say for your Kasa, one more time. Now, I'm not watching, can't.
It's here.
I must say for your Kasa. Friends of Ken for Yanda. I must say for your Kasa. Hey, yeah, my Kasa. Friends of Ken for Kasa. Who more I would find. No, 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 it's here, they are. Who more I would find, no, no, it's here, you are. And can you for your Kasa, for. Who more I would, it's here, you are Kasa. Yes, yes, uh-huh, yes. Friends of Ken Global. Justice for all. Friends of Ken Global. We will die for our country, justice for all. I mean, justice for all. And for you for, honor both. Now, I'm not, I'm in for, I'm in for them. Ever, I saw for, they Kasa. Friends of Ken Global, and my, I know it's not here. Yeah, it's not, no, my, yeah, but. Yeah, Enewa, yeah, that's for. I can't be honest, and your power. Honor both. It's not it's not. They are, I know it's, they not for, I know it's. They be here, I, I, Enewa, I know it's. So, it's here, I'm here, it's here, it's here. It's here, I'm here, it's here, it's here. Enewa, I, 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 I. Now, it's here, I'm here, it's here. It's here, it's here. Yeah, Papa, it's here, it's here. Yes, I see it, it's here. Yeah, Papa, I can't be honest, and your power.